Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at the June 16th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please note that this meeting is being conducted as authorized by Governor Andrew Cuomo under Executive Order 202.1 last extended as 202.110, which allows for virtual meetings by public officials. Let me first confirm that each board member is alone or not with someone who's going to try to change the way you would vote. Ms. Weiser?
I'm alone.
Ms. Wasser?
I am alone.
Mr. Oliver?
I'm alone.
Ms. Dexter?
I'm alone.
Mr. Pickett?
I am alone.
And Ms. De Napoli?
I'm alone.
Please join me as we offer our guilty to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Hudson-Statsburg Storage. These are additional units that were approved back, I believe, in 2019. The applicant has asked for an extension of the time in which to start construction and commence it. Make it a motion over the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Second, Brent Pickett.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchins, welcome back. Good to see you. Have a nice summer.
Michael?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Scott, do you want to add anything?
No, just very anxious to get started, but I'm also anxious for the construction industry to try to settle down just a wee bit.
Yeah, contractors have been telling us in six months, supply chain things should, issues should be resolved so the costs come down. Because it's a little crazy right now.
Yeah, yep, just a little.
Councilman, I don't believe that there are any members of the public that signed up to speak tonight.
That's correct.
There being none, would anybody from the board like to add anything tonight? Thank you. Then make it a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion. Brent Pickett?
Thank you.
Chris Oliver?
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 We're closing the public hearing with the proviso that we're allowing seven days of written notice or written comment to be sent to the board. And Scott, we will put you on the agenda for July 7th because that will have elapsed time. I mean, we're not expecting anybody, but it's been our policy all along. We'll have you on the 7th to the extension. Okie doke?
All right, excellent.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Nice seeing everybody. Bye.
Good night.
The next item on the agenda is Hudson Valley Hospice House. I'm happy to say that we are finally at the point where we are considering a final approval. If everyone will recall, we did have, we approved a minor subdivision to combine the lots earlier. In the interim, the SWIP has been reviewed. There are three minor corrections that Mr. Sotero wanted. And Mr. Sotero did speak with a geologist at the Department of, County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. As it turns out, the geologist there was only not worried about impacts to neighboring wells from rock blasting. But as I told Mr. Kaminsky, they were actually more worried about what it might do to the well on site for Hospice House itself because it's going to be fairly close to where the drilling is going on. But they weren't as worried about it as what we thought they might be even for that site. So everything else was resolved. Michelle, Mr. Kaminsky, Mr. Berger, anything you guys want to add?
No.
Nope. Anything from the board? Or Victoria? Or Tad? Okay, we're ready to go. I believe Ms. Dexter is going to introduce this resolution.
I am. Resolution to grant conditional site plan and special use permit approval to the Hudson Valley Hospice House, June 16th, 2021. Resolution number 2020-17C. Whereas, 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 bunch of times, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby makes the following findings pursuant to Section 108-8.4 of the zoning law. One, the project will not result in excessive off-premise noise, dust, odors, solid waste or glare, or create any public or private nuisances. The project involves the construction of a residential care facility. The applicant has provided screening and fencing to minimize any off-site glare and noise from headlights in the facility. Solid waste will be disposed of in screened commercial dumpsters. Two, the project will not cause significant traffic congestion, impair pedestrian safety, or overload existing roads. The project is located on New York State Route 9G, which has an annual average daily traffic of 9,464 vehicles in 2015, along this portion of the highway. The project is anticipated to add an additional 43 vehicle trips daily during a 24-hour period. Three, the project is suitable, given the property size, location, topography, vegetation, soil's natural habitat, hydrology, hydrogeology, and its ability to be screened from neighboring properties and public roads. The proposed building is set back from the road and has attractive architecture. Although there will be blasting, the applicant in town have consulted with the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, which has indicated that it has no concerns about the impact of the blasting on neighboring wells. The planning board and its engineer have also investigated stormwater issues on neighboring lots and have determined that the project will not exacerbate existing conditions. Four, the project will be subject to such conditions on operation, design, and layout of structures and provision of buffer areas as may be necessary to ensure compatibility with the surrounding uses and to protect the natural historic and scenic resources of the town. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants conditional site plan and special use permit approval to the project as depicted on the site plan set and authorizes the chair or his authorized designee to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, proof of filing of the approved subdivision plat with the Dutchess County Clerk and submission of a PDF of the filed approval subdivision plat to the zoning administrator. Three, revision of sheet SP06 to specify that the two up-down wall fixtures shall be used as down lighting only. Four, revision of the site plan set to include color, exterior, elevation plans, and for all sheets to have the same final revision date. Five, approval by the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health for all the methods of water supply and sewage disposal. Six, approval by the town attorney of a stormwater easement and maintenance agreement. Seven, approval by the town attorney of an easement, giving the town of Hyde Park and the public the right of passage over the sidewalk, but not the obligation to maintain it. Eight, approval of the stormwater pollution prevention permit for the town engineer and stormwater management officer. Be it further resolved that the planning board recommends the zoning administrator issue permits for the signs as shown on the site plan set and let it further be, and it further be resolved that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing the issuance of a building permit for the project, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator with the following. One, a PDF of the signed site plan set. Two, proof of recordation of the approved sidewalk and stormwater easements with the Dutchess County Clerk. Three, four paper copies of the filed plat in accordance with 96-15 of the town code.
I second that. And Weiser?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Days are extensions. There being none, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to you all. Can't wait to see this getting up and underway.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, everybody.
Enjoy.
Took a long time, didn't it?
It seemed to, yes. But the good news is that there's very few conditions, actually, and they're easily met.
And we appreciate, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a consideration to relax the, or to grant dimensional bonuses for, to letter and symbol heights for signs proposed for Chestnut Mobile. This is a peeling station and convenience store located at the corner of 9G and Cramelbo Road. So before we sort of get into this, at the last meeting, and we did have two members absent, at the last meeting, as I understood it, everyone wanted me to, we wanted to grant the relaxation of the letter heights under the distance from the road or the size of the building, that we would give special aesthetic merit for the squirrel logo at 24 inches wide and 19.2 inches high, because remember, the maximum we can give in a direction is 24. I measured the distance from the primary access roadways to the building. They were roughly 65 and 70 feet, so the max we can give is three inches, because it's one inch per every 20, one inch per every 20 feet, building is set back from its primary access roadways, being on a corner, has two primaries, both 9G and Cramelbo. So the resolution you see grants it that way. Then earlier today, or earlier this morning, I should say, Ms. De Napoli said, I'm a little confused. I thought we were only doing just the sizes, no aesthetic merit. So I believe that this resolution is prepared correctly, but this is open for discussion. If someone thinks that we should not be granting anything under aesthetic merit, there is a second resolution prepared, only grants the additional size for the logo based on the distance in the road and the size of the building. That made any sense? Comments? Diane?
I was the one that started the inquiry. I really don't see the aesthetic merit to this sign. I'm not saying that we cannot grant a certain amount, but I'm concerned that to grant it based on that, are we opening up a Pandora's box going down the road? Yet. This, the aesthetics or the letters? And what's special about that? And Ann Dexter's shaking her head. And the squirrel? It just does not seem to balance out in my mind.
I find that the, I'm looking at the balance of the whole thing, the whole logo, which is the typeface and the squirrel. And this, the size of the, right, the size of that, of those combined versus the white space that's left, the leftover space, makes it an evenly balanced aesthetically pleasing sign.
Anyone else?
I, yeah, I just wanted to hop in and say that what we're doing is we're, we're trying to, all we can do here is give what we are allowed to do under our zoning. So the letters can only go up to 13 inches based on what the law says that we can do for the letters. So that's one thing, but that now has to go to the ZBA to get the, the full amount for the letters to make it more balanced, because that's, that's how I remembered it, so that we can't give any more than 13 inches for the letter height. But we do have the ability to do some extra with the, with the squirrel. I don't know, you know, a squirrel is or is not aesthetically pleasing. But I think what we're trying to do here is give the maximum what we can, but that's still not what the client wants. They're going to need to go to the ZBA. So all we're doing here is giving the maximum of what we can.
But it's not 13 inches that we're giving.
It is.
For letters, it is.
I read that wrong then. My apologies.
They would like 17. So remember, the ZBA must grant the minimum variance that it can. So if the planning board has the ability to make a finding and say, based on the distance or the, from the road or the size of the building or the design speed of the road, one of those three, we can increase the letter height. We can increase the symbol size, as it's called, based on all those three characters, all those three qualities, or we can find special aesthetic merit for a logo. Chris?
So I'm also a little bit confused because I, I thought after the last meeting, we all kind of agreed that after seeing the sign on the building, that we all liked how the larger sign kind of laid out on, on the facade, but that we didn't want to get involved with the legality part of it of being able to change the sign code. So we were going to kind of, you know, leave it up to the zoning board to make that correction. That's what we're still doing, right?
Except that I thought that you're, you're kind of the one who introduced it. I thought you wanted to split the differences, I'm calling. In other words, do the dimensional increase based on size of the building and distance from the road for the letters, that's what we can grant, but then do something separate, do the special aesthetic merit for the logo.
But it's still going to the ZBA.
It's still, it's still going to the ZBA.
That's, that was kind of where my confusion was.
If they, they want 17-inch letters.
Yeah, the ZBA needs to.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to the next level with it. Very good. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Yeah, so I was not at the last meeting. My concern is setting a precedent on that logo where I cannot justify the logo in and of itself as having aesthetic merit. I do agree that the way it's laid out in relationship to the letters seems to work fine, but we're not asking to look at it as a whole. The aesthetic merit is about the logo, not the letters. So my, I just don't want to set a precedent when I, I cannot find a justification on aesthetic merit just for that logo, if I'm making myself clear. So I would like the zoning, I would be comfortable proving the letters and let them make their whole case to the zoning board, because I'm just not comfortable with setting the precedent.
If I could, I believe we've, we've set the precedent. We have done this at least once before. The Hudson Valley Hospice sign had a big round sun.
Starburst, starburst.
Starburst. And we gave that aesthetic. We, we allowed that to go up. So this is not setting precedent. This is following what we are allowed to do underneath our zoning.
So I would just comment on that, since I did vote for that aesthetic merit on Hospice House. I felt that the aesthetics, I was, I felt like the sun linked with their mission and what they're doing there all was very integrated and, and attractive. I just don't find anything particularly attractive or important about the squirrel. So that's, that's how I differentiate it in my, in my head.
I should add that even though I was present at the last meeting, I weighed in more or less saying that, I gave you the example of why we included this, and that was the kytale that Victoria also discussed with you, because we were on the same committee rewriting the sign code. So, I mean, I don't plan to vote yes on this, because I don't think that we should be giving it special aesthetic merit. But, but I understand what people were saying, and that's why I wrote the resolution the way I wrote it, because I thought there was a majority that wanted to support it this way. So everyone can just vote yes or no, however they feel most comfortable.
And to clarify, if we are voting no, we are voting no on the aesthetic merit of the logo only.
We would be voting no for the whole resolution.
All right, and then we, I got it. I know.
That's why I have an alternate, that's why I have an alternate prepared. In case this one fails, I have an alternate one that would still give them some increase, but only the size that we're allowed to based on the distance rather than aesthetic merit.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
I'm sorry, I'm laughing, but this was, this is one of those conundrums, that the more we got into it, the more confusing it was for everybody, I could tell. Anyway, let's go ahead and introduce the resolution. I believe this is done by Ann Weiser.
Okay. Resolution granting discretionary bonus to increase maximum size of letter, symbol, or graphic pursuant to town code section 108-242F2, Chestnut Market, 1110 Ballard Avenue, grid number 6165-03-424184, June 16th, 2021. Resolution number 20, 20, resolution number 2021-20. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the board makes the following findings to permit a maximum symbol of 19.2 inches in height and 24 inches in width with a ma, and a maximum letter, and maximum letter heights as cited below for the proposed Chestnut Mobile walls, market wall signs. One, the additional size of the symbols is appropriate, given their relationship to the size of the building and corresponding aesthetic merit. Two, the increase in size for the letter height is appropriate due to the size of the building upon which the wall signs are being placed. Be it further resolved that the board hereby grants the applicant the requested sign bonus to permit a maximum letter height of 13 inches for the letters forming the word chestnut. And be it further resolved that the planning board recommends issuance of a sign permit for the wall signs by the zoning administrator if the variance for the remaining four-inch increase in height up to a maximum of 17 inches for the C and the A, C comma H and two Ts is granted. Second, Ann Dexter?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Do I call, let's call the roll, Cynthia. If you don't mind. You have to unmute yourself.
There we go. Okay. Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Ms. Wasser?
Nay.
Mr. Pickett?
Nay.
Mr. Oliver?
Aye.
Ms. De Napoli?
Nay.
Vice Chair Dexter?
Aye.
Chairman Dupree?
Nay. Does that mean it failed?
One, two, three, four nays. Three, yes, it did fail.
Okay, so Councilman Krepnek, now would be the time that you would call the second, you would put up the second resolution. So what this does is this then only grants the dimensional increase that we are allowed to based on distance from the road and size of the building to the logo and the letters, and it's been changed accordingly. Ms. Dexter, do you want to read this one again? You'd have to read this from the screen. Is that okay?
Yes, that's fine. Resolution granting discretionary bonus to increase maximum size of letter, symbol, or graphic pursuant to town code section 108-24.2.F2, Chestnut Market, 110 Ballard Avenue. Resolution number 2021-20. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the board makes the following findings to permit a maximum symbol size of 10.1 inches in height and 13 inches in width and maximum letter heights as cited below for the proposed Chestnut Market wall signs. One, the additional size of the symbols is appropriate, given their relationship to the size of the building and the distances from the primary access roadway. The board denies the request for an increase in size based on special aesthetic merit for the squirrel with acorn logo. Two, the increase in size for the letter height is appropriate due to the size of the building upon which the wall signs are being placed. Be it further resolved that the board hereby grants the applicant the requested sign bonus to permit a maximum letter height of 13 inches for the letters forming the word chestnut. And be it further resolved that the planning board recommends issuance of a sign permit for the wall signs by the zoning administrator if the variance for the remaining four-inch increase in height up to a maximum of 17 inches for the C, H, and two Ts is granted.
And is there a second? I'll second that one. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So are we recommending that, as I'm reading it, I'm like, but it, are we setting this up just for the letters, or is this?
So they can, they will now go to ask for any size they want for the, I assume they're going to want a 19.2 inch height and 24 inch width for the logo, but they are free this way to ask for something bigger if they want.
Okay, I wasn't quite sure. Thanks.
Because I wasn't sure whether Ms. Forrest wanted, or, and Grace here, whether they wanted to go try to still to get for a bigger logo like they first want. If you recall, the 17-inch letters originally had a 24-inch-high logo, which made it wider than what we could even authorize ourselves. So Nancy reduced it to the 24-inch width. This way, if the ZBA wants to give them the original size they wanted, the 24 inches higher, they can, it still grants the permit. I didn't want to have to make them come back to us for, for the permit, depending on how the ZBA actually goes, because again, we were, we were only going to authorize the 19.2 inches in height. And this way, we can grant, the maximum we can grant, the three inches is as described, they can still ask for a bigger logo. Hope that made sense.
No, that makes sense to me, but just for, for my clarification, on the earlier one, if, if we had passed the one where we had given the maximum due to aesthetic, would that have basically frozen that? Yes. So now they can get whatever size they want. Gotcha.
They're going to be, Tad says that they're going to be coming to us for a recommendation for the size. So I assume that we would then weigh in on what we think the appropriate size is when the ZBA asks us.
Right. They can still get the five-foot by six-foot squirrel if.
Well, they can request it.
Correct.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, when, if we had passed the earlier one, it would have been frozen in it, 24 inches max.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it, it froze it in, except that if the ZBA had given them a bigger logo, that just means they'd have to come back to us for a recommendation for the sign permit. I mean, if they, if they stuck with what they showed us, then it would be automatic, they'd just get through with not having to come back to us. This way, they have to come back to us if anything else changes besides, and if they want bigger letters, if that changes, they come back to us as well.
Gotcha. You dangled the proverbial chestnut.
I did. Let's call the roll again this time.
Okay.
Just for fun.
Are we ready? Ms. Weiser?
So I just want to be clear. I'm just saying, if I say yes, it's going to the, just going to the zoning board, then aye.
Ms. Wasser?
Aye.
Mr. Pickett?
Aye.
Mr. Oliver? Mr. Oliver? Okay. Ms. De Napoli?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dexter?
Aye.
And Chairman Dupree?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And may I just add, I just found this one so confusing. I am sorry if I made it even more confusing.
No, but.
Signs.
This is going to make, this, this will tee us up, though, for the next one, because it makes it easy, because it was all code compliant.
That's true.
Everyone's had a chance, everyone's had a chance to see, oh, I get it. Your company is your last name. Now I. Thank you.
It's a great name.
It is. Expedite the deal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions of Tracy while she's here? I didn't think so. The signs are pretty much straightforward. So thank you, Tracy, for making these code compliant in the first place. I believe this resolution is going to be introduced by Ms. Wasser.
Yes. Okay, NuVon's Health, 4068 Albany Post Road, parcel 616403006457. Replace tenant panel and freestanding sign, replace wall sign and window signs. Whereas, 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 be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permits for NuVon's Health and Springwood View based on the sign permit application submitted by Amber Smith for owner David Obstep.
Second, Diane De Napoli?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
So if you'd like to say aye, aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Deel. Sorry, we're not getting a chance to meet you more, but I appreciate the fact that you came.
That's okay. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Good night.
The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver for roof-mounted solar panels located at 14 Scenic Drive for the owners Gatra and Altbach. Tad's made the recommendation. They would be visible, sort of, but they're not going to be very protrusive because they'd kind of blend in with the existing roof line that's there anyway. Anyone have any questions? There being none, I believe Ms. De Napoli will introduce this one.
Ten of Hyde Park Planning Board, Andreas Gatra.
Gatra.
Thank you. 14 Scenic Drive, Site Plan Waiver, Town Code Section 108-9.4C2, June 16th, 2021, Resolution 21, 2021-28. Whereas, eight times, therefore be resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby weighs site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the request for waiver of site plan received by the Planning Department on May 28th, 2021.
Is there a second?
A second. Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And those scenics, they're all getting after it with the solar panels. It's great. Some new energy. And the last item on the agenda is to set a motion, to make a motion instead of public special meeting in conjunction with the town board to workshop a proposed amendment to the Bellfield Plan Unit Development Concept Plan. This meeting would be at 6:00 PM on Monday, June 28th, 2021, and I will make that motion.
Second that motion. Ann Dexter?
Thank you. And I believe I've heard back from most everybody that you can make that meeting. I haven't heard back from Chris, I think. Chris, is that okay with you?
Good, yep.
Way to go. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Just so everybody knows, at this point, this will, of course, be done by Zoom, because it's still authorized. The governor, I believe, the last day that the meetings, remote meetings like this would be.